Ready?
Ready.
All right, let's do rule call.
Mr. Rowley.
Here.
Mr. Knapp.
Here.
Mr. Tolmer.
Here.
Mr. Lennon. Mr. Livingston.
Here.
And I'm Joe Power.
All right, so no one signed up for public comments, correct? Are you making the public comments?
No, I was trying to give you the slip. I don't know why. Is my number about here with the five?
No, you're fine, there's no one on it, so we're good.
What is the blueprints back?
They're from the council.
Oh, it's good.
All right, any questions, comments, corrections in regards to the adoption minutes?
Make a motion, will you? Accept?
I need a second.
A second.
Motion passes. Okay, now getting into the new business. Number one is first the active transportation plan. And when I really dug a little deeper into what the actual purpose of the active transportation plan was, I was pleasantly surprised. Anyway, so what I just want to put on the record that the grant is approved, Bridgill did receive $22,000 for funding to do the active transportation plan. The money is available from alligator county, it's provided to communities so that they can improve pedestrian and bicycle connections to local destinations and improve physical activities and safety, which was for me in the interviews, that was an important aspect of this plan. And at our last meeting in May, we decided as a commission to move the FPLG, the active transportation plan forward and let the comprehensive plan be continued to be worked on. Updates is that on June 2nd, June 16th, we interviewed four different companies that applied for the, responded to the RFP. Dale was on Zoom, I attended, council members there was Bill Henderson, Joe Calistemo, and Nick for council. Joe was there also leading the group. Well, all firms adequately answered our questions. To me, one firm stood out and was asked to provide additional information and respond to questions that the co-committee needed. At this point, Joe, do you want to add to that?
No, I think I need that real.
Okay, all right. Now, the question that I have, now, we did do a survey for which was our first, second, third, and fourth selection. The question that I have for commissioners is, do you want to provide your ranking of the companies?
I'll take off. I'll take your presentation.
Okay. And you want to, do you have the co-commission to provide the answer to the question?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, all right.
I'm fine with the discussion and stuff like the co-commission and recommendation.
Okay, so at this time, if I'm not mistaken, it is going to be traffic planning and design that will move forward to the council, correct?
That was the working groups recommendation.
Okay, all right. Now, so since we're moving that on to council, do I get to take a vote?
Probably yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so what, I need a motion to approve moving the recommendation of traffic planning and design on to the council. Can I have a motion?
So will you.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, in regards to the comprehensive plan, the summary that I decided on was the decision of what companies to interview and how many to interview had been pushed back a month, all right? And in that time, because if we're pushing it back a month, are we looking at an August, September selection? Would this go to?
I think the way we're doing it is that we're not going to board contract until we hear what the grants were.
Okay.
We don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves. But I think if we could come to a conclusion of who the recommendation would be to council, I think that's what we want to be.
Okay, and when do you want it before council then?
I think we have that's August, September, the latest.
Okay, good, all right.
So we've got a, we've got a chance potentially to still have multiple firms come and do their presentation, right?
Yes, absolutely.
August, September, recommendation to council is the worst.
Because that's looking like what I was told by the state is when they will make their grant.
Okay.
All right, all right. So also too, we decided last month to work on a questionnaire to send to the companies so that they could review and provide Bridgill with additional information. And I honestly think that part of the purpose was so that we can, we can determine how familiar they are with Bridgill. Are they just responding to questions or are they really invested somewhat in Bridgill? So Tim was kind enough to do the questionnaires, all right? And actually did his data magic.
I might have over engineered it, but I hope it's helpful.
Data's data, and that's what data.
All right, so after that, we did get the responses from the companies, the six companies. We took a look at those six, the answers to those questions, those nine questions, and then graded on a scale of one to five.
Six.
Six, of what we felt, how they responded. And I think some really did show invested, somewhat invested, interested in Bridgill more so than others. Okay, so our goal this evening, as I understand, is to narrow this down so that instead of doing six interviews, we're going to narrow it down to three or four, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So Tim.
Yeah.
You're up.
Okay. So I will share my screen. So just for purposes of eyes wide open, here's the raw spreadsheet so you guys know where this stuff came from and it wasn't, wasn't just fabricated into PowerPoint. I took all the scores from each of the respondents, which was the planning commission here plus Joe minus Larry Lennon, netted all those out, did just a couple of simple tables that I'll show you in a, in a cleaner view here. So don't spend too much time on this, this is what we often call an eye chart of sorts, but again, just a replication of the raw data. Way things shook out are here, so you see the breakdown by score, individual score, and then the red across the top is the ranked one through six. So Evolve rose to the top, followed by Claylon, Mackin number three, HRG fourth, Panoni number five, and EPD number six. And we can come back to these if people want to stare at them and get into some good discussion. But just so we have a feel for, you can kind of find yourself on this view, right, to figure out where your individual scores ranked against the overall group aggregated scores and see if there's any outliers. There are a couple. Almost universally, EPD scored fairly low on everybody's, Dale not calling the out, just the outlier, that was your number one, so there might be some good discussion to have there. Across the board, the rest of them, one and two between Evolve and Claylon jumped up to the top for almost everybody. We're going to have to have some discussion in that middle kind of next tier, HRG, Mackin, Panoni, what do we want to do with those? Again, Dale, pending your, your input there. What I'd like to do, just by way of simple exercise for today, is kind of disposition each one of these and say, these are moving on to the next round or, or these are not. Usually the easiest way to start this would be to take your top one if we all agree that Evolve should be in the included. And usually the bottom one would be tossed out as well, but I want to pause and give Dale some input there if there's any discussion we had on EPD.
No, I thought, I thought some of the answers by like EPD in response to the question hit the mark a little bit more than some of the others. But, you know, I did, I did the questionnaire kind of separate from the RFPs. Because, and I just wanted to just try to go through and do that.
Yeah.
Are they answering the question? Are they providing more information? Are they not? And I was surprised when I got done with this, that it didn't match my ranking of the RFPs at all.
Right.
And I said, and it was just like, ah, it is what it is.
That happened for me as well.
So, right, it happened to me too. So now, everybody, did everybody initially rank the proposals based on public rep? And then did this exercise? And?
Changed everything.
Right, it did, it did.
It was worthwhile.
Yeah.
I mean, I had, one of the, one of the, in fact, I had Evolve pretty high up originally, but other ones, they're like Claylon. See, I had that, yeah, I had them ranked high in that group, so.
Right, right.
I went through the Claylons, I went back through the RFPs that I just kind of referenced them, you know, and to me, they kind of stood out as far as what they were going to do and how they were going to do it. But when you start looking at the examples that they gave us for existing work, I mean, it was all large city types.
Yeah.
And I just don't, I like the proposal, but I would have some concerns about what they're actually, you know.
Yeah. I think the thing that left me wanting a little bit with EPD was that very first question, which to me, I think we included it, it should have been a layup, like what do you know about Bridgill? I was looking for, you have traffic problems and you have a small budget with big city budget problems. And they, they didn't give either one of those back, it was like they went to Baldwin, because I think they did the Baldwin concept, right?
Yeah, they did.
It was like stuff they knew about, but that, that wasn't a stretch question to me, like communicate that you know we're a small borough with limited resources and traffic, traffic is one of our significant problems. To have that be missing is a, is a big swing to miss to me.
I do have one question, only because of, there was somebody that answered questions in regards to our post, our previous plans, all right? Our previous zoning ordinances, and I don't know, since I wasn't around in Bridgill at the time, all right? I don't know, have the zoning ordinances been reviewed lately and?
I was done, I was in planning commission.
Okay.
That's when we did the overlay districts.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's probably like 2010? No, 2012, 2014.
Later than that, I thought it was in 2014.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I did have that history, that's what, I was a little confused. So, okay, all right.
So I guess I just, I'd ask the direct question, Dale, do you, do you want to fight to have EPD in here, in the lens of the aggregate scores?
No.
Okay, so I'm going to go out of presentation mode just to be able to move some things around. What EPD to the double, right? Can we agree, again, just based on the group stock here, Evolve and likely Claylon probably are strong contenders at least for presentations?
Yeah, some of them, yeah.
All right, so it leaves us with some tier twos, and I guess it comes down to how many folks we want to talk to. Just, sorry to be flipping around on you guys, but Mackin, HRG, and Panoni being the three that are outstanding. Mackin was number three, HRG number four, Panoni number five.
And what's the help, close were they? How close was, say, HRG to the, a number three?
Yeah, you can, so I got the totals, are you pregnant? Did you have pregnant Joe or something?
I just brought a watch, you can share mine.
Yeah, they're very close. So number three, Mackin, was a total of 128. HRG was number four, 126, so razor thin. And Panoni was 124. So they're, I mean, you're talking about, we scored one, one to four, that's within margin of error for those three.
Yeah.
I, one of these, let me. HRG, the question I had, I don't know if anybody here can answer it, is part of their answer to. So question four, what should we know about your firm's processes and approach that might differentiate yourself? They mentioned, we have access to civil engineers, water and wastewater engineers. I did not interpret that as if like they don't do that in-house, but can partner with somebody to do that. It felt funny to me, so I just kind of dinged it as a question, like I don't, I don't know how to take, we have access to.
I think that's, that might help source that, I guess.
Right, I think, I think actually a lot of these companies just bring on talent as they need it. I mean, even Evolve.
Why don't you think you're an engineering firm and you brought planners, or you're a planner for your own engineering?
Yeah, okay.
Right.
At least that was mine.
And do you, Joe, any idea, like, does that represent additional fees if they say, well, to finish this comprehensively and we've got to work in an engineer and it's going to be, or do we do this in a fixed fee thing, here's the budget?
The only one though, that can eat conversation to add-ons was Evolve.
Right.
If you remember, their original proposal was, yeah, we can do this as a base, but if you want this, it's extra.
Yeah.
And there was a lot of that, that kind of was like, we really need to flush that out and, and I think we could get really out of hand.
Right.
They were the only one that, I don't think, that was our only flaw that I was concerned.
Right.
I didn't, I'm sticking with, with HRG, I didn't, this is a niche point, but they didn't mention anything about social by way of, you know, engendering some excitement in the community, like in today's day and age, that, that I would think would be a given. And then the question around how they would keep up with us on incremental progress, it was like, we'll give you bigger updates as you realize.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I want somebody to be proactive rather than.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of said that, hey, we're going to be an hour, you
don't have to be rigid and say, hey, it's going to be an hour or a half meeting, but hey, we're going to, we plan on doing this, and then as we get here, we can halt.
I mean, so at least, I mean, I, look, this is going to be a big project.
I like the ones, I like the ones that made, we're going to have a, like a website where we can show.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right. I mean, this is going to be a big project, it's going to consume a lot of time, all right? But still, I mean, if we need to be informed on a, on a monthly or weekly basis, I'd rather do that and be informed and so that we were prepared for the next go around, you know? So I like those schedules, especially, I mean, it's different with, with you, Tim, you have kids, and you have a job, and you know, you have responsibilities that I don't.
Correct.
So.
There was a lot that referenced having updates for your planning commission meetings, and that's.
Right, right.
I mean, all that said, I had them at number three, so.
See, I had.
Who's that?
HRG.
Yeah.
You know, one thing, on number six, the question number six, they were ones that really kind of laid out how many hours were expected of, you know, the, the subcommittee and stakeholder committee meetings and that.
So collective thoughts, if we take these one at a time, HRG, and we can, you know, if we end up.
What's the, what's the scores for Evolve, Claylon, and EDP?
Evolve was a total of 136, Claylon was 135, and what was that one you were asking for?
EDP last.
BDP was 118.
If you look at that, you know, the first two are obviously, boom, they're right there, but making them one or two.
Yeah.
And then with the, I mean, it comes back to, you want to, you want to interview two?
Right.
Well, if you do four, how do you, where do you draw the line? Because, you know, between, you know, you're looking at the, if you're going to go by the data, there's a, there isn't a big margin to vary between four or three and five.
Yeah, I think the data is just that this is directional, right? And there's nuances in here where we say this is 126, but I didn't like A and B, and it's a big.
That's a thing.
Yeah.
Right, right. In all honesty, I think, I think that Mackin should be number three. I mean, that's my opinion. I, I like them, I like them, their presentation, and.
I like them too.
It was.
They're in my, they're in my original top three.
Right, right. I mean, I just think they have an added value because they're, they're, it's, they have an added value because they're bigger, which can also be a negative too, but.
And they're local, right? There's a, maybe I'm giving too much emphasis on local, but like somebody who's like, oh, Bridgill, I know where they're at.
Right, right.
That's, that is.
Yeah. So I, maybe we can kind of, everybody okay with putting Mackin in?
Yeah.
Okay?
We're in selection.
I know. Going once. Panoni, let me take a peek at Panoni. Panoni, I didn't, one of their comparables, one of their two examples, Ben Salem, Pia, I looked them up, they're 10 times the size of Bridgill's, so it felt a little, felt a little off to me. Their other example though was 9,000 people Woodbury in, in New Jersey, so our size, right? But completely different state than that, other than that I have for the average.
Yeah. I mean, they did have some good responses, but I, I had them actually last in both of my evaluations.
I really liked their grant writer, somebody that just partnered with us. I don't know, Joe, if you see that as value add, or it's like, no, that's what you do.
I agree that's what I do.
All right, and that knocks it down. I'm fine taking Panoni home. Any arguments? I think they were, they were revolved across the board. And then there was HRG.
That's where we started about five minutes ago.
So, no other thoughts? I, sorry, just, their first answer to the first question is, HRG staff members are somewhat familiar with the product of Bridgill, like why would you lead with that? Even if it's true. That, I could start being off on the wrong foot. I, I would be inclined to leave them out, one guy's opinion, I'm hoping to. Other thoughts there? Let me see how individual scored HRG. So Mike and Justin, you guys had them pretty high. Mike, that was number three for you. Justine, that was your number two.
No.
Two was Mackin, wasn't it?
You had Mackin number one, tied number two, HRG and Claylon.
Yeah, that I just, that, when I, and, you know.
I mean, we're talking a difference of three points, and we're all here, so I'm not trying to talk you into anything. Thoughts, I mean, if we, if we take them out, then we're just clean with how we scored things as a group.
Right.
Top three, oh. Any dissent?
No.
I might be inclined to, to do this interview though.
Keep going.
How are we going to be do, go ahead, I'm sorry. Now, I mean, are we going to be doing this over a time period, multiple interviews in two days or something like that?
We could probably do it in two days or one day. We did the active transportation in, in one day, we done. The, our only, I think our only problem with that is that we, we gave the window of like a half hour, 45 minutes. But I think if you had a good hour, hour, 10 minutes, you'd die.
Yeah, I think we, in this case.
If it's three, I think we'd get them done in one day.
Yeah.
Four, I don't know.
Four, you'd do two.
Yeah.
Are we able to do the, or I'd say, are you just going to put it in the hours?
I said, we're doing, I do, I think it's five. But whenever, best with the group.
If we're doing, if we're going to do it in the evening, I'll think you do four to five.
You don't?
I don't, I think that's, you need, you're talking.
Is the group available during the day? I think kind of from the active transportation, the only two that couldn't make it, you two.
Yeah, I, I, but I shouldn't. Yeah, days, days are always going to be tough for me. I mean, if we did two evenings and said, you get an hour each, and it's a max of two hours spread across the week, I've got to say that. I don't know if Dale, give a little more thought, I'm, I'm not opposed to just.
You know, I was just thinking, you know, I just looked at my notes here.
Yeah.
You know, they, they intertwined some of what we're looking for along with the MBC stuff, the MBC requirements. You know, some of them said, some of the, some of the RFPs said, you know, we're going to follow the, the MBC level, well, others, you know, said, well, you know, this is an update, we're going to do some of that, but we're also going to do, you know, long range, bigger, you know, look at, look at what the issues are and that type of thing. You know, if I'm, if I'm the only descendant, then so be it. I have no, you know, that's what, that's what Bridgill and HRG are fully developed.
Other, other opportunities, we put them in and ask them the comments specifically on things that we took exception to. Like I'm just rereading it again, they're local, right? So we got the advantage of somebody who's at least in the area of Bridgill, very.
And if you're going to do, if we can do that, we can do it in two evenings.
Right.
It's an aptitude, you know.
Did anybody, did anybody talk this out for yet? To the borough manager again?
Township manager.
Yeah, he was, he rose to the news, he wasn't here.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm okay putting them in, it's just a simple, bang it out in two evenings. Everybody agreeable?
Then I can send out an email to the group saying, hey, let's fix a base and put them in.
Right.
So you're better to email to me this weekend, and then I'll put the work in, and do these kinds of stuff.
Do we want to give any sort of grip notes to these folks and say, here's the questions that the commission had, you got to make sure you cover them in your presentation?
I want to watch the meeting that's here.
I guess that's true, it's all the record now, so. I'd like to know about your social capabilities.
Yeah, it's very serious.
Yes.
Well, you know, I mean, I think it's, it worked out pretty well with the active transportation reviews.
Yeah, fair point, we have a chance to ask the questions live, so.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay.
And then two evenings, what time are you like to start? Six, five?
Six would be, my preference.
Six p.m. start, and then are we staying one hour for each?
I think that's, yeah.
And then we give 15 minutes between each one, it's like a buffer?
Yeah.
Bring you 45 minutes.
No, you're, you're not going to get a, not this.
If we, the active transportation plan was a perfect, perfect learning.
Practice, yeah.
Okay, cool, appreciate everybody taking the time to do that, I know it's, like I said, it's maybe more engineer even necessary, but eyes wide open, everybody had their chance.
Yeah. Thank you for doing it too.
Yeah, happy to.
All right, so we have Evolve, Claylon, Mackin, and HRG that will be interviewed over two nights, two a night? And you're going to provide dates to us, is that it?
I'll shoot an email with some dates, July, August at the latest.
Okay.
That way we can come back August or September, and, or, 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 for August, so then September council has something, you can, you can wait for it.
Okay, all right. And we kind of just keep reviewing this stuff again?
This board.
Right, right, I did speak to a couple of references, the two of them at least, and got some input which I thought was interesting, so. All right, so do I need a motion or anything to move this forward? Okay. Dates for interviews, you're taking care of that. Any other dates from you?
No. I'm, and for next month's meeting, we have, I have two agenda items. One is the engineering way back next month for an update on the long-term flood plan. And then I have a law consolidation that should be ready for next month as well.
Okay, all right. So, Tim, I want to thank you again for doing that.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, you make it so simple, don't you? I mean, you make it so simple, I mean. But anyway. Okay, all right, so no addition, you have a comment there, uh, Mr. Blasio?
Yes, thank you, Pat Blasio. Um, comment is on the upcoming presentation from the engineer on the flood improvements. Wanted to see if the planning commission had thought at all about integrating some traffic components with the flooding components. I don't know, anybody's thoughts on that, if that is, uh, something you've looked at?
Consolidating how?
Well. The engineer brought forth three, three options for mitigating the flooding, um, from all, from McLaughlin Run Road, uh, through the back channel of Churchers Creek. That's what you were speaking of and, uh, Joe, that's what's coming at the next meeting, right?
Yes.
So he's gonna be presenting that and the focus of those three proposals was on mitigating flooding. It was a very concise proposal to mitigate flooding. Um, at the same time, the Baldwin Street, Bauer Hill corridor is subject to traffic issues. It has, it has multiple conditions, flooding, traffic development. Um, and I was curious as to the planning's commission's thoughts about bringing somebody else in to talk about the hard care, not, the, uh, the traffic issues in that corridor. The traffic corridor goes from about Painters Run Road all the way up to, you know, Churchers Valley Shopping, the Port Authority Bus Garage. Is the, is the traffic corridor, just like the flooding corridor is the back channel of Churchers Creek, all the way down to McLaughlin Run, to the Borough Line and down to Saint Clair. The traffic component of this is Bauer Hill Road going from Painters Run all the way up to Washington Pike, that's your traffic. The same way you have a.
Yeah, this plan, uh, if I remember the plan as presented, it only included anything outside of flood mitigation was to remedy of the Bauer Hill.
Right.
In the, the following area.
Right, it was, it, it was, it had no traffic component to it at all.
But he did include other areas where, and he had, uh, ideas of, hey, let's do away with Baldwin Street Bridge, uh, put it around about a year, uh, redirect the traffic to Orchard. That was looked at, but beyond, uh, beyond McLaughlin Run Road to Union Street, no.
No, and that was only, and the, and the traffic was, was a result of the flood mitigation. If you chose one of the options, you ended up at the cul-de-sac of Bauer, or Baldwin Street.
Correct, yes.
I'm asking a different question. You have an excellent engineering firm doing great work in the hydraulics and in the flooding area. And my question is, what is the planning commission's thoughts about bringing somebody in to look at the traffic component? Not asking the engineer who's doing the flood piece.
That's the comprehensive.
Right.
Well, that's the.
The active transportation.
Well, the active transportation is walking and biking, yeah. This is a traffic component and not a, a comprehensive plan for the borough anymore than, anymore than the flooding issue is a comprehensive plan for the flooding and, you know, it can be a component piece. It's, again, I was, I was curious, what are the table? I don't know that you've got an answer at this point.
So I have a question for you, Pat. I've sat on this committee for almost two and a half, three years now, okay? And I've, I've been exposed to at least four different plans, not, I've been exposed to after the Baldwin Street flooding and the plan which virtually made Baldwin Street into grid space, all right? So that was my first experience with flood mitigation in Bridgeville. And then from there we had several others and then you, you look further back and you see things from other engineering firms that designed or did something to, to mitigate traffic, to avoid traffic. Has any, I mean, we already have five plans on the books, right?
Five plans for?
For traffic, resolving traffic. All right?
I'm not aware of any plan that is on the books at the moment.
And what does Bob Fryer talk about all the time?
No, he is, he has dabbled, Fryer has dabbled a bit with Baldwin Bauer Hill for just that narrow corridor and he certainly hasn't brought that to a true traffic plan. Cause, you know, these are ideas.
Right.
You know, but I'm not aware of any traffic study, traffic plan, you know, anything, any proposals for the corridor that goes through Baldwin Bauer Hill. And again, that corridor, just like the flooding, the corridor for the traffic is Painters Run all the way up to the Port Authority.
Let's just say trap, elimination of traffic jams in Bridgeville for both Bauer Hill as well as Washington Avenue.
And, Joe, do you know of anyone that have looked at Bauer Hill? I know of a number, north end, south end.
No.
Of Washington Avenue, but I don't know of anybody that's looked at Bauer Hill.
Okay, all right. But still, I still. I think that, well, that's in the comprehensive plan, I mean, from what, everything that I've read for these.
Our whole proposal was written so that.
Right.
These concerns will be addressed in that.
I would imagine that everything you're doing with the flooding is going to fold into the comprehensive plan. I can't imagine that you could have a comprehensive plan without bringing in what you're gonna have next month.
Right.
It's gonna flow right into the comprehensive plan.
There's an awful lot of flooding going on already.
Yeah, you're already, you're already doing it, right?
Right, it's ongoing, so I don't know.
But, I mean, the, the, the traffic, what you're talking about, this corridor, you're talking about, it's just one piece of the transportation traffic issue in Bridgeville.
Yes.
And I think, uh, my personal opinion is, is if we're gonna look at traffic in Bridgeville, we don't look at it piece by piece, it's something that we look at in its entirety. And I think that some of the stuff that's gonna be coming out of the comprehensive plan will help give us some ideas as to how to approach or how to look at, um, where do we wanna go with traffic issues. Um, it's, you know, and, and traffic is obviously one of the issues that this commission has been, been struggling with for years. And, you know, by doing an update of the, uh, comprehensive plan, it's our hope that it will give us some direction, us, here are some ideas of where to go with the traffic issues. And at that point in time, we can take that and as a planning commission, we can look at that, we can decide that maybe, you know, we go to the, the council and say, hey, you know, maybe we need to do a traffic study and maybe we need to hire a traffic engineer to do X, Y, Z.
Well, that's the whole idea of a comprehensive plan, to plan for, comprehensively so that later you can come back and flush out details of what you're going to do specifically. Right, that's what, but just as right now, next month, you're going to look at flooding issues, you're not suggesting that you wait for the comprehensive plan, you're gonna look at those because that, that flooding issue's been in the first comprehensive, it's been in many comprehensive plans and it needs to be done.
It's just building on what, uh, Joe was saying.
Exactly, so not the, you've been doing flooding projects. What I'm asking is, just as you're taking the flooding proposals at, and bringing them in from professionals, my question is, do you have any appetite to get a professional to come and bring to you something on the traffic in that same corridor?
Well, if, if you were to, if I was to ask you, what would, outside of combining a Bauer Hill and flood mitigation together? If you were to, if I was to ask you, what do you think the biggest traffic problem in Bridgeville is right now? What would it be?
In, in Bridgeville?
Correct.
Uh, the biggest traffic problem in Bridgeville, I'd still say the south end because it's not solved at this point. But, I mean, the solution is waiting for it. So the, the biggest unsolved traffic problem in Bridgeville, I would have to say is the north end of Washington Avenue. That's the biggest unsolved problem. And that north end piece, you know, flows into, into the Bauer Hill Road piece because a lot of the traffic that's coming up Bauer Road is going on that, is going north on Washington Avenue. You know, it, the, the, the reason I bring up the issue is because your flooding mitigation plans have a minor touch on the traffic. And so, but, you know, maybe you guys would like to have a, have a traffic guy and have that resource to come in and give you some insight into, well, hey, wait, look, here's how you can, here's how you can integrate the two at the same time. Since I was wondering if you would, were interested in that resource and.
I mean, it sounds like a, a plan, I mean, it sounds like a good plan.
I think it's a fair idea and I'm certainly willing to entertain it. I, I don't naturally, when you start with Bauer Hill, I don't naturally go to that. I, I think of two lanes becoming one, coming down from the shopping center, big problem. Now, probably not that easy to divorce, to your point, things coming from Bauer Hill. Bauer Hill ball, but it's not where I go when I think about the most immediate plan to solve. But if you're saying it's a component of what we can consider the north end, I, I can get on board with that. That, to me, is number one, host what they're doing down there, interchange, I'm, I'm all good with the idea.
If you're open, maybe we can get something. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so Rich, could you do a question? Any more, what's going on with the infrastructure? Do we have any ideas to what's going on with federal government and when they anticipate that they're gonna start losing money? For the time being.
What other question?
I think it's a good priority, Joe, from the municipalities. If we do come to an agreement on the flood plan, what option we think is best, I, I think it's advantageous that we, if they do come up with this infrastructure bill.
Yeah.
We, we advocate for this because this is big money, this is probably a once in a lifetime opportunity. It'd be silly for us to sit here and deliberate, deliberate, deliberate while this moves on. So I think it's a priority from us to say, all right, there's five options, here are this flood plan. None of them are the most, we're all not gonna love everything.
Right.
But if we can come to an agreement, I, I think this is an opportunity where we at least use this plan to try to leverage funding.
How do we come to that agreement, though? Uh, you know?
I think this is what it's gonna come down to is that, here's what you have, is that you hear what the engineer proposes.
Right.
You make a recommendation that, hey, we like option one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah.
And, hey, we make a recommendation council that you explore getting funding for option three.
Okay.
That's really, that's it.
It's gonna be a busy year.
That's, that's really, I think ideally that's what I would.
Right. So if we keep an eye on the bill and, you know, it looks like, then we need to start getting prepared. It would be my best.
Correct, that's why the engineer will be here next month.
Okay.
And then hopefully we could come, cause he's coming back to you at, with answering the questions and what you wanted from the first time round. So we, we can't just keep talking, we need to flush this out. We know it's not gonna be a hundred percent, but at least it will be a start that we can have something to push forward to at least try and lobby funding.
Right.
And then we can adapt as we go. We're gonna have to.
All right. Okay, great. All right, any other?
Joe, yeah, just quickly, I think since we were together last time, we got an official response from the state on our, we don't want the tool booth here. What's the, here, widely vacillating comments out there, some people say it's a done deal and it's dead. Do you have any sort of formal feel for?
No.
No.
And the only one that responded, uh, to the borough, other than the local senator and rep, has been the Secretary of Transportation who responded.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Timing associated to that or nothing published?
Uh, no, nothing's published.
It's an election here. For some of it. All right, anything else?
Yeah, I was just gonna, as you were talking about the infrastructure bill, that's one of the reasons I was suggesting, you know, transportation. It seems like you're interested in some, maybe I'll.
Yeah, I mean, you can always talk about it.
Yeah.
All right, no other comments, Joe? Anything, all right? I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, all right. Okay, great.
Hi.
All right, oh, sorry.